This will be recorded. So you will be able to find the recording and the slide decks that are presented on our websites at a later date. Just keep checking. We're going to take questions at the end of the presentations, so please make sure to hold those questions. You can feel free to put your questions into the chat as you think of them. So that you don't necessarily have to keep them in mind. And with that, we'll begin. So our intention by the end of this webinar is that you will understand how to apply for the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands state loan program. We're very interested in making sure that people understand the possibilities of financial matches. That might be available for incentivizing broadband projects in your communities. We obviously are thinking of this as one of the ways. You'll learn how one community has applied the program to their broadband needs so that you have an example to work with. You also understand how the BCPL program benefits school libraries through the interest earned, which is also a really key part of this program. Just to make sure you understand, this is being put together by the UW Extension Broadband Team through a grant from the Public Service Commission and the Wisconsin Broadband Office. We were able to expand the broadband team to five specialists who work statewide. I myself, Brittany Byer, I am the Resource Procurement Specialist. My colleagues Jessica Beckendorf, John Parrish, Gil Haik, and Chris Stark all work in slightly different sections of the field. But we all work very, very closely together. And so please do, if you need to ask any questions, all of our email addresses are there. You can reach out to any one of us. We work closely together, as I said, and we will be able to point you in the right direction. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Rich Snyder.
Thanks, Brittany. My name is Rich Snyder. I am the Chief Investment Officer for the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands, which is the oldest agency in the state of Wisconsin and the only one that was created in the Constitution. Not a lot of people know about the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands, so I thought I'd start out with a little history. A lot of people don't understand, but there was actually two constitutional conventions for the state of Wisconsin. The first one in 1846 dissolved in chaos. They couldn't agree on a woman's right to own property. They couldn't agree on immigrants' right to vote. They couldn't even agree on whether or not banking should be allowed within the state or the boundaries of the state. But there was one idea that made it intact from the chaos in 1846 intact to ratification in the Constitution in 1848. Now is the creation of a public endowment for public education. But how are they going to structure this fund? The fund should be permanent. You know, it should help educate children of today and tomorrow. The founding fathers had concerns about concentration of power. You know, this was a major asset for the state of Wisconsin, and they didn't want the governor or the legislature to control this fund. So what they did is they wrote a solution into Article 10 of the Wisconsin Constitution that created the agency to manage the fund, the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands. The board is comprised of three separate statewide elected constitutional officers. The Attorney General, who should know about the law. The State Treasurer should know about money, and the Secretary of State should know about record keeping. And that's still our board today. The current Board of Commissioners of Public Lands includes Sarah Gettleski, who's the Secretary of State, John Lieber, who's the State Treasurer, and Josh Kahl, who's our Attorney General. And we meet on the first and third Tuesdays of every month to approve loans and conduct other visits. Back in the day, how is this initial endowment going to be funded? Well, when states were joining the Union, the federal government wanted states to be strong members of the Union. But they didn't have any money. What they did have was title to land that they had acquired through treaties with the Native American tribes. And that's how we got our name. They, the state granted land to the state of Wisconsin, and so we are now the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands. Although now we manage a lot more money than we do land, but that's just the way it works. The original land grants included Section 16 of every township, which was about a million acres. And there were several other land grants over the next decade or two that eventually totaled about 10 million acres. About a third of the state was granted to Wisconsin by the federal government and flowed through our office for sale to fund projects. Back in the 1850s, there was a land rush, and we sold millions of acres of land at a buck and a quarter an acre. You know, land wasn't valuable back then. You couldn't even get to it. The only thing of value really were trees. And so selling 10 million acres of land for a buck and a quarter an acre, how did the Common School Fund, which are K-12 schools today, grow to be $1.4 billion that we manage today? Well, the founding fathers thought that, you know, public educational is very important to the founding fathers. And so they said that in the Constitution, unclaimed property, so if somebody dies without an heir, that property should go into the Common School Fund. The clear proceeds of fines and forfeitures to the state of Wisconsin should go into the Common School Fund. So for example, if the Attorney General settles with a drug company for being a bad player, that money is supposed to go into the Common School Fund. And I would venture to guess that most of the people watching this webinar today have been contributors to the Common School Fund. Because if you get a speeding ticket in a place where there is no municipal court, and you go to a circuit court to pay that fine, a small portion of that fine goes into the Common School Fund. But we did a study about 10 years ago, and about $15 of an average $165 ticket went into the Common School Fund. So, you know, thank you for your support. How is this money going to be invested? You know, back in the 1850s, we didn't have the tools that we have today. I mean, there wasn't even electricity. There was no stock market. And so what were they going to do? Well, the original board lent money to the citizens of Wisconsin. But that didn't work out very well. Remember back in the early 1850s, Wisconsin was mostly undeveloped wilderness. There were few, if any, banks. There was a lack of institutional control. There was fraud. There were inflated appraisals, and this led to big losses to the trust funds. Then something happened in the 1860s. You know, the Wisconsin sold bonds to fund our troops and efforts in the Civil War. And the Board of Commissioners of Wisconsin actually bought those bonds. And so we funded our troops in the Civil War. Funny thing about that is that after the Civil War, the Wisconsin, the state of Wisconsin, didn't want to pay those bonds off. They didn't want to pay back the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands. And so two of our board members, the Attorney General and the Secretary of State, actually had to sue each other to force the issue to the State Supreme Court, which in 1921 determined that yes, the state of Wisconsin needed to pay those bonds back, which they eventually did in 1941. But back in 1871, a legislator had a pretty good idea. The BCPL State Trust Fund Loan Program was created and authorized by the state legislature. The borrowers would be Wisconsin municipalities and school districts. And this program would develop a simple alternative to bonding for our borrowers and would also be a prudent investment for the trust funds, you know, low risk with a reasonable rate of return. And this program has been a success by any measure. You know, we have had no defaults in 150-plus-year history of the program. We have great customers, Wisconsin municipalities and school districts. We currently have about $300 million in loans outstanding, and these loans can be used to fund any public purpose. The, the State Supreme Court has determined that public purpose in Wisconsin is a very broad definition. In fact, my boss likes to, likes to joke that if it's not a brothel or a casino, we'll fund it. And we have provided funding for thousands of Wisconsin projects. It saved millions of dollars in fees and provided hundreds of millions of dollars to public schools over the years. And this loan program is unique to Wisconsin. There are no other states that have anything similar to this. So how do you qualify for a loan? There's really only two simple criteria. Do you represent a Wisconsin municipality or school district? We lend to taxing authorities. So if you're a town, a village, a city, a county, a lake district, a sanitary district, or a sewage district or system, you can borrow from us. And they're borrowing for a public purpose. Now, this includes buildings and infrastructure, economic development, capital equipment and vehicles, and refinancing debt. You know, it hasn't happened a lot since, you know, in the last few years. But, you know, if you have debt on your books that's at a higher interest rate, we don't charge any fees, and so we can refinance that debt at a reasonable rate of return. Over the last 10 years, we have lent over or near $1.1 billion to municipalities in the state of Wisconsin. About 20% of these loans have been for economic development and about half for buildings and infrastructure. We also fund a lot of capital equipment and vehicles. You know, fire trucks are getting to be pretty expensive. And so, you know, a small town or village, it's difficult for them to afford a half a million to a million-dollar fire truck. And so we lend a lot of money for fire trucks. Our average loan size is actually only about a half a million dollars. And we make about 10 loans a month. We also refinance debt, like I mentioned. On this page, a simple one-page form to, to request a loan application. But this form basically tells me who you are, how much money do you want, and what are you going to use it for? It gives me that information so that I can develop a custom loan application, which I'll get out to you within the next few days. Our process is simple and fast. You know, like I, like you just saw, we have a simple request form, which is available at our website there, which, and then the application also is very simple. It's five or six pages, fill in the blank, and includes the resolution that your board needs to pass, the borrowing resolution. Our process is fast. You know, the average time is 45 to 60 days. You know, the record for a loan was 17 days, but the stars were aligned for that. You know, the, the customer had a special board meeting within a day or two, completed the application, got it back to us to get on the next board agenda, and then they borrowed the money right away. When I receive that loan application request form, I lock the rate. And I lock it for 60 days. And so there's a 60-day period after, after you request the loan that you have to have your board meeting, move the loan, the borrowing resolution, have your clerk, complete the loan application, and get it back to us. And then if that happens within 60 days, the rate remains locked for the full term of the loan. Following our board approval, you have four months to draw the funds, and we don't charge any interest until you do. You know, all of these loans are going across my desk, and I do not want to see plans, invoices, or expenditure levels. I mean, these are general obligation loans. We don't take a security interest in the land, the building, or the equipment. You know, our security is your tax levy. So how is it possible to maintain this simple process and have no defaults in 150-plus years? Well, you know, we retain the rights God at our borrowers, which we do, but it's, it's extremely rare. But we rely on our borrower compliance with state statutes. Consider the 1881 penalty for using a trust fund loan for something other than the approved loan purpose. Five years of hard labor in the state prison. I think they might have changed that law, but, you know, I don't know for sure. But the main reason, our main security is that state statutes require us to intercept shared revenue in case of a default. Now, like I mentioned, we've never had a default. We've never had to intercept state revenue or shared revenue. But shared revenue is a major component of most municipal budgets, and they don't want to screw it out with that payment. And so they make the payments outside. Today, we just lowered our interest rates last week, and we do follow market rates. Our rates for loans up to 10 years are now 5.5%, and from 10 to 20 years, we're at 6%. We also offer revenue loans, and the rate on that is going to depend on the risk in the deal. I generally recommend all of our borrowers to go with general obligation loans if at all possible, but some political difficulties, you know, require that borrower to do a revenue loan because they don't want to put their taxpayers at risk in case a project fails. Completely understandable, but it raises the risk because we don't take a tax levy in, in those situations. We just require on the revenue generated by the project. And so we have to charge a little bit higher rate. It's a little more difficult approval process, but it does get done on a K. So why borrow from us? Well, we have a simple process with fast approval. We have competitive long-term fixed interest rates with no fees. We don't, we charge absolutely no fees. Like I mentioned, you know, with that two-month rate lock and then the four-month draw period, we offer up to a six-month rate lock at no additional cost. We offer custom amortization schedules because a lot of projects aren't going to generate the type of revenue needed to pay the principal and interest for a few years after the project is completed. And so what we can do is go interest-only for a couple of years. And we have the flexibility to restructure the loan in case there's a problem, which you're never going to be able to find in the bond market. We charge no prepayment penalties. We do lock out prepayment in the fall. So from September 1st to the end of each year, we don't allow any prepayments because that's when everybody's going through the tax levy calculations. And, you know, if we allow prepayments, that would muck up the works. We also don't interfere with local decision makers. If your board wants to borrow money and they can dot their i's and cross their t's, you're going to get the loan. We, I've been there for 12 years now, and the board has approved every loan that staff has brought to them in that period of time. The best part, the absolute best part of this whole thing is that all of the interest that is paid on these loans is redistributed to public schools for their libraries. 100% of the interest on these loans is returned to Wisconsin communities as aid to public school libraries, which really, you know, the bottom line is it reduces local property taxes because the public school district doesn't have to look to the local taxpayers to fund that project. Over the last 10 years alone, we've distributed over $420 million to K-12 public school libraries. Last year was a record $65 million. And that's been going up pretty significantly over the past few years. I've got some examples of, for economic development projects. Oneida County has been a really good customer of ours, and they have borrowed funds on a general obligation basis from, from us, and then relent those funds to the Oneida County Economic Development Corporation. Now, a lot of our economic development loans are what we term pass-through loans like that, where we'll lend the money to the borrowing municipality, and then the borrowing municipality will lend that money or grant that money to the developer of the project. Well, in Oneida County, they lent it to the Oneida County Economic Development Corporation, which purchased property for a build-to-suit facility for manufacturers. And then the long-term lease payments from those manufacturers flows back through the Oneida County Economic Development Corporation to the county and then to BCPL. And Oneida County did this with two separate projects. ABX, which is a plastic film producer with a major customer of Omaha Steaks, and they employ about 60 people in Rhinelander. And then Experis Specialty Solutions makes a specialty paper product that's used in the carbon fiber process for airplanes. And there was a plant in Rhinelander that was Boeing's sole supplier for this, and Boeing thought that they needed some redundancy in case there was some interruption in the production of this paper at the original plant. And so Oneida County bought a empty printing plant and refitted it to, as a second location to make this specialty paper, created another 20 jobs, supported hundreds of jobs at the, at the first location, and they renovated an empty printing building. The Town of Rome, which is just south of Rapids, borrowed $12 million on a general obligation from, from us to fund an economic development incentive to develop the Sand Valley Golf Resort. You know, this golf resort was opened in May of 2017 and named the best new course by both Golf Magazine and Golf Digest. And the success of this project is illustrated by the subsequent need to expand the Wisconsin Rapids Airport to accommodate the number of private jets flying in to play this course. It's crazy stuff. And then Mount Pleasant is my last example. That's in Rissim County, and I'm sure everybody's heard of Foxconn. But when that project was getting started, the village borrowed $20 million from us as interim construction financing for tin infrastructure. They did it on an interim basis because they intended to sell bonds in the open market. But that takes time to put a bond together, and so they wanted to get that project started now. And so they borrowed $20 million from us. They sold the bonds and paid us off. You know, that worked well for everybody, and they used us because we have the speed, flexibility, and we allow prepayments, and we don't charge any fees. And so that worked well for everybody. You know, Foxconn has been, but it's a success story, not nearly as successful as they originally anticipated. But now, from what I understand, Microsoft is taking over much of that land to build data centers. And so I think the, the village of Mount Pleasant is very happy with that whole project after all. And Brittany, that's really all I have for today. From what I understand, we're going to wait for Q and A until after, after the full presentation. And so I'll hand it back over to you.
Thanks, Rich. So now you understand a little bit more about the BCPL loan process. Using it for broadband is a fairly new possibility, but there are examples of communities that have done it. So today, we're going to hear from David Bogan. He's on the Presque Isle Broadband Committee, and I'll just hand it over to you to tell your story.
All right. Thank you, Brittany. As Brittany said, my name's Dave Bogan. I am the co-chair of the Broadband Committee for the Town of Presque Isle, which, for those of you who may not know, is way the heck up north. Pretty, is about as close to the UP as you can get without being there. Let me put it that way. Several years ago, the town board of the, of Presque Isle wanted to explore the possibility of having better broadband service in the town. This started in about 2019, and there were a variety of efforts to move this forward. And then finally, in 2021, two things happened. One was the federal government through the FCC had a program called ARDOF, or the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. And what we discovered is that about half of the Town of Presque Isle would be funded by this program. So in other words, federal dollars and no dollars from the town. However, the committee recommended to the town board, and they accepted that recommendation, that we would really look at trying to provide broadband service to the entire town, to all property owners. And in order to do that, we worked with Spectrum or Charter Communications, as some people know them, to develop a grant application to the Public Service Commission. Now, that was done in early 2022, and we were awarded that grant in June of 2022 as well. Now, in the funding for that, it really came out of three sources, and this was partly done to make sure that we obtained the grant. So Spectrum put in 3.9 million of their own dollars for this. The PSC gave us a grant of 1.9 million, and the town itself, through resolution, committed to 1.2 million. And that's where the BCPL comes into the, into the picture. Because $1.2 million is quite a bit for a small town in northern Wisconsin to finance. So one of the things that the broadband committee did in working with Spectrum and, and the town board is we split the, split the $1.2 million into two pieces, a $300,000 piece and a $900,000 piece. And this was done to tie payment to Spectrum to specific project milestones. And Paul Speck, who is the other co-chairman of the committee, and I have background in doing contracts and proposals and things like that, and we wanted to make sure that we could hold Spectrum to account to make sure that the town received what it was being promised. So that first piece, the $300,000, in 2023, the town entered into a loan with the BCPL. It happened to be for $328,000. There are a variety of reasons for that, which are not relevant at this point. And so that loan was done for this first milestone, which has to do with making sure that Spectrum is covering all of the addresses that we believe that they should cover. And that loan was done for 328, as I said, it was a two-year term at 6.25% interest because that was the going rate at the time. And that will be paid off in full in March of 2025. Subsequently, we have the remaining amount, $900,000, that also has to be financed, though that amount has actually been reduced by some other activities. One is, the first loan was for more than 300,000, so there's 28,000 available to us. And as part of the recovery from the pandemic, many towns in Wisconsin, including Presque Isle, were awarded ARPA dollars. And those were specifically designated by the federal government for broadband projects. In other words, to improve rural broadband. And the town received about $63,000 for that. So what we figure and what we plan to recommend to the town board is that we actually finance about $812,000 through the BCPL, just as we did before, to cover the balance of the, the obligation that we have to Spectrum. And as Rich said, this has been a very simple process. The BCPL has been very easy to work with. Any kind of questions that we've had in the past, they have answered quite quickly and effectively. And I think from, speaking both from the committee's perspective and somewhat from the town's perspective, this has been the easiest way to obtain the funds that we need for what is a very expensive project for this small town in northern Wisconsin. So we have a town board meeting this evening, and this, the subject of this additional loan will be on the agenda for that. And hopefully, we will get that done and, and move forward and use the BCPL again. I highly recommend it as an approach for financing municipal projects. So that's all I have, and I'll wait for any questions at the end.
Great. Thank you, David. You'll find in the chat, I just put some information about the BCPL loan programs. There's one-pagers that are available. The interest rates have changed, so we'll probably update that on the website. But Rich also told me that you could get that one-page information on their website as well. Now I'm going to hand it over to Monica Truppo, and she's going to talk about her, her point of view, working with the Department of Public Instruction, and how important it is to schools. So I'm going to stop sharing, and so Monica, go ahead and share, and we're very interested in your story.
Thanks, Brittany. And let's just make sure. All right. Brittany, can you just give me a thumbs up, make sure we're on the same page there? All right. Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. As Brittany mentioned, my name is Monica Truppo. I'm the School Library Consultant for the Department of Public Instruction. I've been with the department for seven years now. And I am really honored to be part of this conversation and to share with you how the Common School Funds are really truly a way that you can borrow money and give back to your community at the same time. This program is essential for our school libraries and also very unique to the state of Wisconsin. So I, I thank Rich for the history behind the Constitution because that Constitution is unique in our nation as far as providing this kind of resource for school libraries. Our school libraries are key to developing literacy. Research has demonstrated more time and time again that the school library is really a key and valuable part to increasing literacy for our students. Our book purchases, which, you know, these pictures probably are representative of what most people think of when they think of school libraries. So I just kind of wanted to start there with what we're all familiar with. These purchases are critical for student success because our school libraries go beyond the curriculum in serving our students in their interests and their inquiries. Leaping off points that they get in the classroom are just expanded in the library by all the choices that they have. According to WIMTA, which is our professional organization, they last surveyed their members in 2020, and 92% of the respondents claim they rely solely on the Common School Fund to fund their school libraries. Common School Funds are used for many items beyond books. So I have a couple of pictures here. They are used for technology. They buy tablets and computers and all types of other technology devices for our libraries. You can see students playing with Sphero robots in the middle picture, learning the basics of coding. And a unique purchase for one school district was a huge map of Wisconsin that students were able to interact with in their library program. Um, that students were able to interact with in their library program. The possibilities are truly endless. Um, when this money comes into our school libraries, uh, our library programs. Uh, meet the needs of our students and staff and provide. Many avenues for inquiry, uh, as well as the books that we commonly associate with our school libraries. In fact. Um, it is the library staff, the the librarians that are making these purchases. That really build the programs for the students. Otherwise, what we wind up with is just a roomful of stuff. So really, it's the expertise, the professionalism of our school librarians, um, who take this funding. And apply it to their programs, um, budget and spend in effective ways for students. Couple more examples here. You can see, um, social media posts of students on iPads. The middle picture is actually a phone recording studio, uh, where students are making podcasts. And, um, learning how to do recording, um, in their library. That's actually a picture from a library space. And then we've got V R goggles, um, that one of the local papers wrote up. That, um, these goggles were purchased for a library and then used in classrooms as well. So you can see that there's just so many different options. Um, for these purchases, not only to be part of the library program, but then to integrate back into the classrooms. And books have changed as well. Of course, we buy print books, but we also buy. E-books, digital books, and audiobooks. Uh, we've got a consortium in our state. Um, called the Wisconsin School Digital Library Consortium, where you can see in two thousand and twenty three, had over a million checkouts. Um, almost close to a million and a half, and we're record-breaking again, and schools. Pay for that access with Common School Funds. Um, you can see a picture of a device there where the device is actually reading the book out loud to the student. With different apps. Um, so again, meeting different learning needs. Audiobooks for listening to books, again, helping our learners wherever they are at. The D P I has a suite of webpages devoted to the Common School Funds where you can learn a lot more. Um, as was stated already, the spending is outlined in Wisconsin statute. The D P I's role in this, um, collaboration is to provide guidelines for standing, spending. And also, our school financial services team, um, is able to allocate the funds out to districts. Um, when they come from the B C P L. Uh. Know that the library budgeting is part of our library planning process. So the library plans are also required through, uh, Wisconsin Administrative Code. And our districts use the Common School Fund again to enhance what their library program looks like. Um, the infographic that's pictured here is sort of a brief, uh, list of talking points. We often give this to our librarians when they talk to their business managers and their administrators, um, to kind of give them a short summary of what the Common School Funds are all about. But I encourage you as well to take a look there, because that kind of gives you a very quick synopsis of what the Common School Fund does. For our students in our school districts. And I've also provided a link so you can see in your particular district, um, how much money. Your students are actually receiving through the Common School Fund. Um, the fund is distributed per student, um, so it is allocated to, um, districts by size. And so we have some very important partners. Obviously, the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands manages the fund for us. WIMTA, our professional organization that I noted at the very beginning of the presentation, um. It helps advocate, um, with legislators and for school libraries in general. So the D P I would, um, be nowhere without those two organizations. Um, and then finally, I also wanted to provide some contact information for you. And a link to these slides, because again, sometimes, um, you want to go back to that information. And the D P I website isn't always the simplest one to navigate, so you'll have direct links. You can either snap the Q R code right now, um, or we'll give you the link to the slides in the chat as well. So I will stop sharing and. Again, allow Brittany to open things up with questions.
Great. Thank you so much, Monica. Um, and now we'll take questions. It looks like Tammy, you have your hand rose. It's up right now. Would you like to ask your question? Uh, just one more time, Tammy, uh, you have your hand raised. Would you like to ask your question? Okay, uh, Paul, I see you unmuted yourself. Do you have a question?
Yes, good question. I'm I'm Dave's co-chair here, but going forward, we have a loan already, uh, from B C P L. We're about to get another loan. Uh, are those loans refinancable? For example, if there's a two percent or three percent reduction in interest rates over the next ten years, can we refinance those loans? Or not?
Yes, you could. You can refinance loans outside of B C P L, but we actually refinance our own loans too. But because we don't charge any fees or have any other costs, we put a hurdle on that process. Um, we require communities that are gonna refinance a loan to borrow additional funds. Equal to twenty five percent of the amount that they want to refinance. And the reason we do that is because our job is to distribute money to the, to our beneficiaries, which are the, uh, K twelve public school libraries. And if we didn't have a hurdle in there, every time rates would go down, everybody would refinance the loan and we would, that's all we would ever do. And so most communities have another project that they need to fund. You know, there's a lot of roadwork that they'd see it done and other things like that. And so, uh, it's usually not a significant hurdle that we require in additional borrowing to qualify to refinance, but but it is there. Just so that everybody's aware of that. But if you want to go to the bond market or to a bank to borrow the money to refinance our loan, we allow prepayments without penalty, so that's a bit of rules.
Okay, you generally allow repayments anyway, so.
Yes.
So, early repay.
Yeah, 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 we allow prepayments without penalty, just not in the fall. From September first through the end of the year, we like that.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
You bet.
Uh, Nick, it looks like your hand is up.
Uh, just a quick question. Is this library program? Is this a special program? Or is this just be using like a regular state trust fund loan?
The loans, well, there's two things. You know, we lend money to municipalities and school districts. To create the interest that we distribute to the libraries. And so there's, it's kind of a, uh, you know, circle of life kind of thing where it just keeps going around and around, you know. The the municipalities that pay interest aren't paying it to some bank on Wall Street. They're actually paying it. To this, to be redistributed to their community. Does that help?
Right.
Yep, that makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions? This is a perfect time to ask any detailed questions. We've got the experts here.
If anybody thinks of any questions down the road, just give me a call too. I'm usually, I'm usually in the office, so. It means you can get a hold.
Perfect. Um, I have a question for you, David, um, as you're one of the communities that used broadband. Um. Where it, I, and I think I, we talked about this earlier, so you might not have been part of the early days. But, um, what other, um, options were, was Presque looking at and thinking that they were gonna? Somehow finance the the remainder of the town?
Actually, um, at the time, excuse me, at the time that we had to do the resolution. Um. Really, the only thing we looked at was the B C P L at that time. Since then, there's been some discussion periodically about potentially doing a municipal bond. But the hurdles for that are quite high. And technically, um, in this particular case, we're making a contribution. To a project that the town does not own or will not ultimately own. So in effect, it doesn't qualify for a municipal bond. Um, so that kind of, you know, puts us in a position of saying, okay, either go to a bank or do something else or. Use the B C P L, and as Rich has pointed out, um, that benefits the community as well. So it's a win-win for us, you know, easy way for us to get money and to return to the community as well.
You know, like Dave mentioned too, is that, you know, our program is very well-suited for projects that. Uh, the community has to fund, and then they get reimbursement back from the state or the federal government. Because we do allow prepayments without penalty, and we don't charge any fees. And so those proceeds from the funding organization can be just used to pay down our loan, and it works really well for the situation.
And David, one more question about, um, why you decided to do it in two stages, right? So you have a smaller, um, investment upfront and the remainder is going to follow. Can you talk about, um, what the the agreement was that allowed that to happen?
Um, yeah, um, let me put it this way. It took us nine months to negotiate with Spectrum. Their lawyers were very slow. But essentially, what we did is there there are two pieces, two milestones that we wanted to, um. Hold Spectrum to. The first was what we refer to as address reconciliation. So in that instance, what we are doing is saying to Spectrum. You have your work that you've done, your design work of where you're gonna lay fiber and what homes are going to be provided for. You need to provide us, the town, your address information. And then we will reconcile that against information that either the town or Villas County, where we're located, has. Typically based upon tax records. And based upon the reconciliation of those two sources of information. Um, you will receive the first payment of three hundred thousand dollars against the obligation that we have. Um, we have not hit that obligation yet. They were still working through this process. Um, so even though we took the loan out, um, last year. Uh, we have not yet had to pay Spectrum any money. The second portion is at project completion, which currently should be end of November, early December of two thousand and twenty four. And so at that point, uh, we would then pay Spectrum the remaining balance. However, that is predicated on proof of project completion. Based upon the criteria that the P S C uses, not criteria that Spectrum themselves may use. And so we negotiated this agreement on behalf of the town, uh, with Spectrum, and then had the town approved it. Um. In, I think, twenty three is when when we got it approved. Um, and that's where we stand. So that's why we split it up, because we didn't want to just say. Here's all your money. Thank you for doing the project. We wanted to tie this to some things that are tangible for us from a town perspective.
Great, thank you. Paul, yes.
Add to that, I think Dave may have alluded to this, but make a little clear point. Spectrum wanted three hundred thousand dollars within thirty days of signing the initial contract. And Dave and I said, nah, no, we, and reason, a couple of reasons why is we wanted a milestone. And second of all, Spectrum had won the ARDOF bid for our town. And that ARDOF bid, uh, the areas was very nebulous as to what properties were in the ARDOF areas and not in the ARDOF areas. So it was, all right, we want you to do everything other than ARDOF, but no one could tell us what everything other than ARDOF was. So we said, all right, fine, let's do this. Let's not pay you three hundred thousand dollars on day one. Let's pay you three hundred thousand dollars when we have this address list that covers the entire town and we're comfortable. And then, so that's kind of the impetus behind it as well. That's all.
Right.
David, Paul, did the Presque Isle have a ref, uh, an elector referendum or to approve the project as a whole? Or how did you look at that?
So there were a series of, um, public information sessions. This was in the twenty one, twenty two timeframe. And then, uh, once we had a firm, uh, proposal with Spectrum to apply for the P S C grant. We went to the electors, had an electors meeting, and then the town approved a resolution to commit to the one point two million dollars.
Those approved at a town board meeting?
Correct. We, we, you know, as a committee of the town, we make recommendations to the town board. We don't decide, you know, the answer. We give them the information and they decide.
Great. And activities like this are going to become more frequent once bead starts to happen. Especially, uh, since there's a piece inside of that, which includes engagement and endorsement in the application process for bead. Uh, so I think, you know, stay tuned for more information on that from, uh, the P S C broadband office. Uh, but also from Extension as we help, um, all of the communities navigate through that endorsement process. For, uh, since it's a little bit different from past, uh, broadband grants. Um, any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you very much for attending today. I'm just going to put, uh, one more thing up on the, um. Here we go. Uh, there we go. Um. Here are our, uh, emails of the broadband team at UW Extension. Just one more time. Uh, thank you again for attending. Um, once again, you will, this will be recorded and you'll be able to get all of the slide decks and materials for further use. Uh, there again is also, um, one pagers on both of the loan programs. Uh, so you'll also get a quick survey at the end of this. If you can fill that out, that would be really great. Um, it helps us understand what you are looking for, uh, in the future. Well, it looks like we can end just a little bit early today, and so thank you very much for everyone's time. Um, please do, um, uh, reach out if you have any questions and enjoy the rest of your August.
Thanks, everybody.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.